Okay, Madam Clerk, are you ready to begin your recording?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we will call to order the regular meeting of the Town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for the Monday, July 27th, 2015. We begin our meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Farrell, would you please ...
Sir, would anyone rise for pledge?
(inaudible) in the United States of America and the true republic which stands one nation under God indivisible who liberates and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, before we get too deep in the meeting here, the attorney has brought it to our attention that we had one item given to us that didn't show up on the agenda. That was the issue of giving employees the choice of whether to take payment of room or insurance coverage. Curious is that the rule of the board, would you like to see that on the consent agenda or do you want to have a discussion opportunity on new business for that?
(inaudible).
Okay, so we want to put that as ... I guess it's going to be new business. Want to deal with the ... New business number two? And with the board's permission, I would like to pull the consent agenda, item number five, and designate that as the ceremonial agenda item to read into the record before we deal with the consent agenda. Is that ... we will agree with the board?
Yes.
Okay, so we will log on the agenda to the ceremonial agenda beginning to read this resolution. Before I do that, I just want to welcome, we have some guests tonight from Scout Pack to 951, the Scouts back there, they're working on their citizenship, Merrick Badge, and their Scout Master, Christopher Beckerdine, who welcome you all to our meeting. Hope you learned what you need to learn tonight.
Good luck.
Okay, under the ceremonial agenda, I'll read a resolution of the Town of Pittsburgh. Resolution of the Town of Pittsburgh, honor donors to the Page Vernon Memorial Park. Reg. Judge Vernon was a longtime resident of Chatham County, who served Pittsburgh and the larger community as a district court judge, assistant district attorney, lawyer in private practice, and active community volunteer. And whereas the property adjacent to the Hall London House owned by the Town of Pittsburgh was donated to the town in memory of Judge Vernon, in memory of her service and enjoyment of that location to develop as a public park. And whereas the James Milton Johnson and Laura Blair Johnson Trust for Pittsburgh made a donation of $12,600 to ensure that Page Vernon Memorial Park be constructed with the highest standards and quality. And whereas the trustees of the Milton James Johnson and Laura Blair Johnson Trust include John Blair, Rick Torbett, and Gene Brooks, therefore now be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Pittsburgh as follows. One, the Town of Pittsburgh shall express its gratitude by constructing a plaque on one of the benches in Page Vernon Memorial Park that recognizes the donation of the James Milton Johnson and Laura Blair Johnson Trust and its trustees, John Blair, Rick Torbett, and Gene Brooks. And two, that a copy of this resolution shall be presented to John Blair adopted this 27th day of July 2015. And we thank the very generous donors of this additional funds to help us complete that park in a better manner. Mr. Mayor, will you need a motion? Yes, we need a motion that's correct.
(inaudible).
All in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. Okay, now we're going on to the consent agenda. We have minutes from the meeting on June 22nd. We have a financial report from our finance officer for the year ending June 30th. We're asked to schedule a public hearing to consider resiling for resiling permit 2015-3. We received a budget travel policy from the ABC Board. And then we just removed the recognition of the donors to Page Vernon Park, which we just read. So any other changes to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consensus unanimous, leave consent agenda is approved. Okay, now we need to approve our regular agenda. With the addition of ABC, we will take the employee insurance item and list that as new business number two. Any other changes to the regular agenda?
Motion to approve.
As amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed, and the agenda as amended is approved. And that's with our regular meeting. First item would be citizen matters. Madam Clerk, did you ever look at ...
No, I don't know what happened to it.
Okay. There was a sign-up sheet in the lobby for people to sign up to speak on their citizen matters. That sheet has magically disappeared. Has anybody signed up before the sheet got lost? Yeah, nobody's holding our sign-up sheet, and nobody wants to speak on their citizen matters.
(inaudible).
Okay, we have one citizen. Do you have my sheet?
No. Sheet disappeared before I walked in.
Okay, so would please identify yourself, name and address for the record, please.
My name is John F. Stevens, I generally go by Jack. Address is 145 Hillcrest Drive, Pittsburgh, where it used to be called Sherwood Forest. I have two items. One is a statement of support. I know that the group known as Pittsburgh Matters has been harassing the heck out of the board, trying to get things done their way. They claim to be a group of 600-plus people. They are a group of less than 15 percent of the population of Pittsburgh. I think you guys have been doing a great job. It's about what, I mean, I know there's direction that they need, and I think you guys have been providing good direction. My other comment is, can we discard the title of sanctuary city for Pittsburgh? I don't think, in the wake of what happened to the old lady out in San Diego, sorry, I don't remember now, Kate, I don't think we need to involve ourselves in that type of thing legally. I'd much rather see us honor laws and not say we're going to disregard federal laws. That's all I have. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you.
Any other citizens wish to ...
Hello, I'm P.C. Mann, and I reside at 185 Tumor Loop here in Pittsburgh. And I was just wanting to say that I am very pleased to see the memorandum that Chief Crutchfield provided to you regarding the golf cart ordinance that I presented on May 11th. And thank you very much, Chief, for diligently working on this. And I hope that once Mr. Messick has had the opportunity to review it, the board will be able to pass the ordinance come August, as other municipalities have in North Carolina, to allow golf carts. And I just want to thank you all for your due diligence and all your hard work on this. Thank you.
Okay, one last opportunity. Anybody else sign up on their citizen matters? Now we'll proceed to our first item of new business, which is review of the site plan for Latter Day Saints Church, site plan 2015-3, and Mr. Walden will clarify, and we'll introduce this item, please.
Can you pull the power cord? Yeah. It doesn't want to come off. Yes. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Please be with you again, I'm Roger Walden. I am helping with the management of your planning department while you are seeking to replace your past as planning director. So it has been a busy month, and we have a lot going on, but we've got some very interesting and timely items on your agenda tonight. The first one is this item number one, a review of an application for approval of the site plan for Pittsburgh Ward Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. This is a request for a site plan on a five-acre parcel, Zone R12. And you see the map there that shows the general location of the site. The proposal calls for, again, a 12,000 square foot facility. But the site plan that you have seen has a building, parking areas, stormwater management facilities, and it has a spot reserved for future parking. So if you've been able to see that on the site plan, there is an area right here that you'll see as designated as potential future parking if the church decides that it uses that in the future. And you'll see that on the landscaping plans and so on, that's just blocked off, that that's not proposed for construction at this time. You have in your packet, in addition to the site plan, a rendering that the applicant offered about what this facility might be looking like. The Board of Commissioners allocated waste floor capacity already for that, you did that in base, that's fine. The planning board has reviewed this and recommended approval. It's gone through the normal staff review process, revision of plans and so on, and we believe that this is ready for your consideration and for your approval if you decide approval. So the planning board is recommending approval of the site planification as your staff. So maybe the applicant has additional comments to make, offer?
I'm Phil Cuff with Earth Centric Engineering. We were the engineers for the project. I'll give you hopefully a little bit better view of the church. If I'd have known you guys were using PowerPoint, I would have given you a PowerPoint. This is what is intended to be built at this point in time, and this would be for the next five, 10-year period for the church. Currently, the plan would be to provide stormwater in this area here, which is toward the front of the church. All of the flow goes in that direction. There currently are existing utilities within the roadway that are adequate for the site, and the parking currently meets the minimum standard for the church. They do, in about a 10-year period, they would extend the building here and here, and then provide additional parking here with this stormwater management facility here. If there are any questions, I'm happy to address them. This has been approved, the staff review, and right now, while we're waiting on approval.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions from the board, for either the applicant or the staff?
Well, I answered one of my questions as to when the parking might expand, so I hear that timeframe threshold. So I think that probably also answers another question, is that stormwater device is not designed to handle the expansion of the parking, but in fact you'll have another.
That is correct. And part of the reason for that is, is that, as you all know, stormwater management has been changing rapidly over the years. So we thought it was best to go ahead and design for what we currently are building and incoming, and we have reserved space on that side to allow for that.
Okay. And you're using a sand filter?
We currently are using the sand filter.
Okay. And the emergency spillway is the riser device?
That's correct.
So there's no spillway?
That's correct.
And I think there's a 30-inch pipe under the roadway?
I believe that is correct.
Is that going to handle that event?
Yes, in fact, the sand filter is slightly oversized and actually should provide even, kind of help that pipe currently by allowing it to not see as much water as it currently does.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions from board members, for the staff or applicant? Do I hear a motion to approve this site plan? Does that move? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consensus unanimous, leave the site plan is approved. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Our next item is review on preliminary plat for the riverstone subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got a couple of items to discuss here. This is a preliminary plant application, so as your procedures go, this would be, if you approve this preliminary plat tonight as is recommended, then the plans would begin for the construction of streets and all of the infrastructure. And at some point in the future, this would be coming back to you for approval of a final plant before the construction can be completed and houses built and occupied and so on. It's located just off of 64. You've got an arrow there that shows the approximate location on the map to your left, and then a more detailed map on your right. This is, this property is Zone Residential A2. That map on the left is our zoning map. It just kind of gives you a general view of the area that is to the east and north of where we are sitting and standing right now. And you can see right here that this is the property that is proposed. You can see that it abuts this area that is closer to the Hall River that is not going to be built upon. So it is kind of on, this is the edge, this would be the eastern edge of Pittsburgh at this point. The, what is proposed is a, is, how many lots would you say? Thirty, I'm sorry, 33 single-family lots. It's a 97-acre parcel. The, you can see the street configuration there, and with some common space that's to be owned by the homeowner association in this southeastern corner. When this came to the planning board, there were two conditions that were being recommended by the staff as conditions of approval. One was that this road be, instead of cul-de-sac, be stubbed out to this adjacent property. And the second was that there be some pedestrian easement dedicated to access this major open area between the subdivision of the river. The applicant came to the planning board and offered some arguments in favor of not going with those two conditions with respect to that pedestrian easement to the east. There is going to be homeowner association, and the documents in there are going to be specifically addressing pedestrian access across the homeowner association land, so that takes care of that. And the idea of the stub out to the property to the west, the applicant was reporting on behalf of the adjacent property owner, and got agreement from the property owner. That's not something that they're interested, it's not something that this property owner and developer is interested in. And the planning board was, found themselves in agreement with the applicant that those two conditions that the staff was recommending did not need to be part of the recommendation. And following that discussion, we agreed. So the recommendation that comes to you tonight is the same recommendation from both the planning board and the staff for approval of this preliminary plan as it's shown here. And again, we have an applicant with us tonight who will be, could offer additional comments and answer your questions.
Questions from the board, for either the applicant or the staff?
Well, I see that we are stubbing right-of-way, and I would assume roadway to the very, I guess that would be eastern, or right southern side of the property line, and that there's a gravel tee turnaround that I think would be used for emergency service vehicles. I do have a concern about it being gravel. The roadway, at least when I look at it in profile, is, I don't know, barely steep, maybe 5%, 6% there. And there's going to be a lot of water running straight towards that gravel, and the design suggests that it's going to take a 90-degree turn, another 90-degree turn, and then run off this way. And, you know, one, is it, assuming the fire marshal has reviewed this and says that's fine, it's big enough for his vehicles to get around, but it seems to me it would be far more durable if it were a paved surface. You know, I think it'll last well for a year or two, and then the town will be out there replacing gravel if we leave it as is, and I think it'd be better if it were asphalt. That's one comment. The other is for staff, clarification, the lot in question, I think, is labeled as open space?
Correct.
Right? And therefore will be open to the public, and therefore negating the need for a specific easement location?
That was part of what was being discussed.
Okay. Is that a true statement, that essentially that entire lot is now accessible to the public? Okay. Thank you.
For clarification, this property is well out into ETJ, so the town never be fixing grounds out there, gravel or otherwise?
No.
It's the HOA's responsibility.
Where is the map? The gravel is on the adjacent property on one side of the line, but, so I don't understand exactly how that's going to happen. No, this is the DOT street, I would assume.
Another question, just to make sure my assumptions are correct. I see you're connecting to an existing street down in the lower, the southeastern corner, and saw that it is paved, looked it down on Google Art. And then the other assumption, I want to make sure, again, you're way out on the edge of the ETJ, and the lot size suggests that this is all well and septic, how does this start?
Yes.
My assumption, I want to make sure I'm not making a false assumption.
Yes.
Mayor Terry and members of the Town Commissioners, my name is David Lastly with Piedmont Land Design. And if you'd like, I'd like to address some of the questions that have been raised this evening. The stub that we have in the southern location right there, we are required with that stub to have an adequate turnaround for fire apparatus. And there's certain standards set forth by the North Carolina Building Code as to what size and dimensions this are. We have been in communication with the adjacent property owner, and the reason we've shown it in that location and more or less designed it for a temporary situation is for the future development of this property, so that we're not coming in and tearing up expensive paved roadway, or a turnaround, or a hammerhead. It's not set up to be a permanent situation. Thus, the reason it's on the adjacent property, we worked that out with the adjacent property owner, so that we could do that, so that we also were not tearing up property that was already sold and/or dedicated in right-of-way, and then having to turn around and revert back to private property. We were able to do it here, so that when he does his construction, we can just continue that on through the adjacent development. So there was some thought, forethought also, in trying to come up with a solution that worked long-term and short-term in meeting the needs of the fire department or emergency vehicles, and as we look forward for future development. The open space lot that's over in this location, exactly right, it's open space. What we agreed to with staff was that in our HOA documents, the entire lot is open for access. To come in and define a specific location, in our opinion, was unnecessary whenever we have that entire lot available. And then let the citizens of the community determine when, where, and if they want pathways and all through here. I would like to point out, up at the end of this cul-de-sac and through here, there already is an existing trail that goes into the parkland over here. And we are establishing an accessway for that one, for access, for the occupants, so they can come in and access, to a point that actually already has a trail and all into the parkland, so. Questions about access? Yes, we tied into an existing public street. Roads will be taken over by NC DOT for maintenance.
So if that northerner access, is it, you'll be placing that within an easement?
That's correct. That will be an easement. And that is on private property.
Okay. So it'll go through the lot or along the shared property lines?
And that's a note.
Okay.
And we'll be on the final plan.
Roger, I don't know if you had a specific conversation with the fire marshal or fire chief about the gravel surface. I'm worried about it. I'm worried that three years from now, the DOT is not necessarily going to maintain it, and that we'll find ourselves out there with a large, heavy vehicle, trying to make a maneuver on the less-than-adequate surface.
Yeah, one of the things, the building code, which is part of, taken on from the fire code, there are specific design requirements for that turnaround to withstand fire apparatus vehicles. So there's specific criteria. I can't just come in and just do, just what you and I would think of just a standard little gravel turnaround. There are specific design standards that have to withstand the loads associated with a fire apparatus vehicle. And those are defined, that's regulations that we have to adhere to.
Yeah. And I know that the fire marshal has great ability to suggest and require greater standards.
That's exactly right.
And I don't know that six inches of stone base is enough to handle the weight of those vehicles. I just don't know that. But I suspect it's not sufficient. So.
If we came in with, and this is something that we do frequently, too, is come in with a, well, one thing, could we do it in a manner that's acceptable to the fire marshal?
That would be fine with me.
Okay. And just have some language associated together. That would be inside.
That would help my comfort level. We're giving them what they need.
Absolutely.
Because we need them to function well.
We want them to function well.
Exactly. Right.
And then we would see that in the eventual site plan.
In the final plan.
In the final plan.
A little more just general question. I know you've got, State of North Carolina parklands between you and a river, I couldn't tell from the map, but that said standoff was, you know, off the top of your head, how far you are?
The distance from here to the river?
To the river, yeah. That wasn't skilled, so I had to go ahead and do it.
Several hundred feet away, there is a large section of land in between.
Okay.
It would be this, it would be that distance.
Pretty close to the width.
Almost half the width of the property.
So we're not bumping any buffer issues there as far as we know. So all questions, I had. Any other board member questions?
I just have one question. I just wanted to clarify on this. The access entrance is off that side road, that state road, is that the only entrance, correct?
That's correct.
So from the entrance there to, say, Lot 17, what kind of distance are we looking at?
And Lot 17?
Part of there.
This one? I couldn't tell you exactly. What we're trying to avoid is an immediate cut-through for what would be future roadways planned by the town on their thoroughfare plan. And we don't mind cross-connection and interconnectivity. And we don't mind cross-connection and interconnectivity between the properties, but what we don't want is a lot of traffic going through these state roads. As the mayor pointed out, this is a rural development, is on the outskirts of town. There is water and sewer provided, and the streets are shoulder sections with, just NC DOT streets. So they're not built to take, cut through traffic that would be coming from, and I have some exhibits if you'd like to see that, but. For future roadways that are planned.
I'm a little more concerned about emergency apparatus, because they're going to have to go all the way down to the end, almost to the river there, and cut back up.
That's right.
Go up the service road, so that's going to be quite a bit time consuming.
And that's the only access, you know, available to the property. Now, in time, as the property to the south develops, and there's a connection made to some of the roadways there, those links and connections will improve over time. But right now, it's nothing out of the ordinary of other developments that are out in some of the rural areas. And it does meet all the requirements of the town as far as subdivision regulations and NC DOT as far as lengths of cul-de-sacs, which are regulable, so.
Commissioner Foley had a question about future improvements to the south there. Do you have to be a big?
I just had a comment that it's rural now, but it might not be rural in the future. And I do think if it becomes more urban, then it's important to have connectivity. So, I'm just wondering too, who would pay for that? That's come up before in other developments here, if it's for, who pays for that connection? And how will that work?
The connection would occur as the adjacent properties are developed. This is rural, it's designated as rural, and very low density on your land use plan. And for most part, there is a cup right through here for a future roadway, and it's really the borderline between medium density and very low density to the east.
So the answer as to who would pay for it is, whatever person developed that parcel to the median south.
That's correct. They would continue on, through their property.
Yeah, they would submit a preliminary plan, just like you have.
Exactly.
Feel the minimal.
Exactly. Just the same as we're taking it from this point through the development over to this point, it just progresses as the adjacent properties develop.
Any further questions for the applicant, staff? If not, I hear a motion to approve this preliminary plan.
So moved.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, the preliminary plan is approved, unanimous then.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Next item on our agenda is Conservation Ordinance Review Committee recommendations. Presenter is Brooke Masa.
I am not Brooke Masa.
Okay.
But I just wanted to say a word to introduce her in this report, and give us a moment to get the correct PowerPoint up on the screen. As you pointed out, as you've seen in the letter, this is a, this is work that has been ongoing by this group to look at what the possibilities are for incorporating into Pittsboro's array of policy and regulation measures that would help in the preservation of both wildlife and sensitive areas. And so Brooke is here tonight, and she's going to present this committee's report to you, and then we will be also taking this next week for more detailed discussions with the committee.
Thanks, Alvin.
Get the click.
Yeah, okay.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk to you about the planning tools for Pittsboro project. Happy to have some updated information to provide you with. I'm with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, but as you can see, that's only one of the many agencies that partnered to put this project together, including, of course, our most important partner in the Pittsboro. So, just to give you a little refresher of why this project came to be, if you'll remember back to 2012, Allison McKee from North Carolina, North Carolina Natural Heritage Program came and presented to you the comprehensive conservation plan for Tatum County, which was developed by the Tatum Conservation Partnership. You all expressed interest in the plan, and were encouraging for us to think about ways to perhaps implement the plan in Pittsboro. And so the Tatum Conservation Partnership started to look for funding opportunities to do implementation of the conservation plan. And in 2012, I came to you with an opportunity to get funding to do some implementation work, and you graciously signed a resolution of support for the project in December of 2012, with the stated interest of gaining information and recommendations on how to protect natural resources in Pittsboro through land use planning and policy. And so that's what I'm presenting to you today, that project, just an update on what we've been doing. We've had a lot of different components to this project. If you'll remember back to, I believe it was in 2013, we presented to you the work of doing a canopy assessment for Pittsboro and in the ETJ, and with an associated ecosystem service analysis, and that was completed. And then Catherine Dyinger and I from the Robeson Creek Watershed Council, and Bios Nosis is her conservation designing firm, or environmental science firm, I'm not really sure how she finds it. But we worked together to compile the best and most accurate conservation data available for the town of Pittsboro. And then we use that data to do an assessment of biodiversity and wildlife habitat in the town, and I'm going to show you some of those maps this evening, of the assessment prioritized areas in the ETJ and in the town for priority protection. And then Catherine led the work to do community outreach in the town, so she met with different local groups, put together a survey to understand what the priorities were for the residents of Pittsboro for conservation. And then she's also facilitated the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee, which I want to talk a little bit about tonight as well. The main point of today's presentation is to introduce to you the development of ordinance language. That was created through this project to improve protection of natural resources in Pittsboro. And the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee that I just mentioned was instrumental in helping us develop that type of language. The last, no, not the last, but nearly the last piece is the economic impact analysis of perhaps implementing these ordinance language, this ordinance language I'm presenting to you tonight. We just actually spoke with the New England Environmental Finance Center, which is responsible for doing that economic impact analysis this afternoon, and found that they're mostly done with their analysis, they have a kind of rough draft going, and we expect that within two weeks, a final product presents to you all on that as well. And then the last piece, where I'm working on this summer with Catherine Dyinger, is to use Pittsboro, what's gone on in Pittsboro as a model that can be easily transferred to other communities that are interested in identifying important natural areas in the community, and developing policies and plans to protect those areas. So that's ongoing currently. So, I'm going to focus on the work of the ordinance, developing ordinance language. And I think it's really important to mention the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee who want to do this. Conservation Ordinance Review Committee is a stakeholder committee that was recommended and put together by town staff. They gave Catherine a list of people and organizations that should be involved in the stakeholder community, and the goal was to review some of the ordinance language that was developed, and to provide recommendations to you all for the implementation of those ordinances. And then you'll notice that that and that were also representing the board of commissioners on that committee. So, they met, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. They met for the past six months, every two weeks, for the whole morning to review these ordinances that I've got to present to you, so they worked really hard to develop the recommendations. So the two ordinances that they took a look at were the Model Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance and the Model Tree Protection Ordinance. The Model Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance was an ordinance that was developed in collaboration with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, which is the agency that I work for, and the East University Nicholas Institute for Environmental Policy Solutions. And the goal of that ordinance is to encourage the conservation of the most sensitive habitats within the planning jurisdiction of the place where it would be implemented. The Model Tree Protection Ordinance was developed also with the Nicholas Institute at the University, but mostly in collaboration with the North Carolina Forest Service. And the goal of that ordinance is to mitigate some of the damage that has caused the tree canopy when a landscape is developing. My expertise is more on the Model Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance, because that is, obviously was developed through the Wildlife Resources Commission, and I spent most of my time working with the court, providing guidance on this ordinance, and not so much this ordinance. So I'm going to focus on this ordinance tonight. And I do want to mention that I was not a member of the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee. I only attended the meeting to be a resource for the ordinance review committee members. So we're going to focus on the Model Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance tonight, that's going to cover that. So the goal of the Model Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance is to protect terrestrial and aquatic habitats high water quality, and to encourage connectivity of the landscape for wildlife habitats. So if you'll notice, the conventional pattern that we typically see in North Carolina and across the country is more like a pattern like this. I don't know if it's very obvious, but there's black and gray buildings all over the land shape that are widely distributed, and so as a result, there's roads that cut across forest land. And the result of that is deep green areas representing forests and farmland are cut into small patches. And this is what we vowed is called habitat fragmentation, which is one of the leading causes of declines in our wildlife population. Whereas the Model Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance aims for development to occur in very sensitive areas with large natural area sedices, and to accommodate those large natural area sedices, it allows for development to be clustered more densely, and then the resulting landscape is a much more connected landscape with larger forested areas that are better for wildlife conservation, and also for many of the benefits that we can get from protecting natural areas. So this is very similar to the Tatum County Conservation Subdivision Ordinance, if you all remember. I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with that, where this is basically asking to be conservation subdivisions in areas. Because the difference with this ordinance is that it's tied to a conservation overlay district, where we ask communities to identify areas that they want to prioritize for conservation, and they strongly encourage or require this type of development to occur in a very sensitive area. And so, one of the key tasks of the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee was to develop a conservation overlay district. And so that's where all that data came in, that Catherine and I put together. So this is the result of looking at that data and forming a biodiversity and wildlife habitat assessment layer, which prioritizes natural areas in Pittsboro for conservation. And there is a packet, or there's like a summary document in your agenda packet, which details the process and all the data that was used in developing this prioritization. So I encourage you to look at that, and I won't try and go into the details tonight unfortunately, but that should help. So we presented this information to the town, and they recommended that we, looking at values five and above as a potential starting point for a conservation district, so that's just the top value. So eliminating values one to three, which also have importance to conservation that are not at high values, or one to four rather. And they also asked us to consider what it would look like to look at a buffer on the Haw River, that was 2,000 feet, in accordance with the land use plan buffer for protecting the Haw River. So when we took a look at that, it sort of looked like that. So it's a big reduction in the area that were considered for a conservation district. So you can see the 2,000-foot buffer there, and this is all the values in that EWHA, the biodiversity wildlife habitat assessment, they have a rank of five or above. And I'm going through this quickly, so I apologize, but we hopefully have time to talk about it in another time. So, all this information was presented to the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee. They took a look at this, and they were concerned about this area, this is a Brooks Creek watershed area. This is the only place that Pittsboro had sort of control over their water supply, because this is the only watershed that's above the Haw River intake. So they wanted to expand protection in the northern part of ETJ to help expand protection of the water supply. And then they also wanted to think about protecting a small isolated wetland. And so, they took a look at a conservation overlay district that was more like this. And there's another change, if you'll notice, in this corner, where the northern portion of the Tatum Park development is meant to be that. They was expanded here in the north, expanded with these little small isolated wetland pockets, and then this area was reduced to facilitate that development, because we know that there's going to be major thoroughfares going through this area. If you look at the previous image, this is that area that has been reduced to help facilitate that development. So this conservation overlay district was voted on by a majority vote by the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee. Catherine was aiming for consensus for this, for supporting this overlay district, but there was one member who was not supportive of this district, and he was also not necessarily very supportive of the whole ordinance. So this was a majority vote decision to recommend that this be the conservation ordinance district that the committee would like to show to you. So what happens if you are a landowner with your land in that district? That's the big question. So for any new development that occurs in that conservation district that is not a depth, so that any major development, basically minor subdivisions are exempt, it would be required for a biologist to do a site survey and identify and map any significant natural resources. And that was another significant work, piece of work that the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee did, was define what those significant natural resources are. And that is included in the documents that you just got tonight. There's a whole big document that, yes, that was given to you at the very beginning of tonight's session on all the recommendations that the committee put together. So if resources are found in the parcel, win their site survey, then there is a required natural area sedicide, that some of that area needs to be protected. Or it could be a voluntary, in that the sedicide is incentivized by getting a density bonus to that developer of that land. And then another big piece of that ordinance is to limit the amount of impervious surface that can occur over the entire tract. So the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee took a look at those stipulations of the ordinance, and recommended that there should be a natural area sedicide that is at most 50% of the development, or, sorry, 50% of the parcel, though we're not kind of Steven Dimes, who says a little bit more on the next slide, because it's not quite as careful as that for some developers. Or you were to go for the voluntary option. They asked for the minimum of 35% natural area sedicide with a 5% density bonus given for every extra additional 5% of area protected. And then they made a recommendation that impervious surface should be limited to 15%, but they were also willing to go up to 25%. So just to look at what that natural area sedicide would mean, so we have a site survey that was done on a piece of land, such as number A here, and found that natural resources of significance that were defined in the ordinance were found in like 75% of the tract, like it is in the schematic here. Then the developer could protect 50%, or should be, would be required to protect 50% of the parcel, and that's that remaining 25% could be developed on, so wouldn't be protecting all the natural resources on the site. However, if a site survey showed that 25% of the tract was covered in significant natural resources, then the developer would only be required to protect that 25%, they wouldn't have to go up to a 50% sedicide. So now, if the developer were to go out, or the biologist were to go out to the tract and not find any of the significant natural resources on the tract, then there would be no natural area sedicide, it would not be in the conservation district, and all the rules of the conservation ordinance would not apply to that people of tract of land. The other piece is the impervious surface limitation. There's an impervious surface limitation put on in the conservation ordinance because we're trying to reduce stormwater runoff and degradation to aquatic habitats, especially in this area that's important with the Cape Fear Shiner. So again, like the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee recommended that there be a limitation of 15% of the entire, over the entire tract of impervious surface, but they were willing to go up to 25%. But research has shown that in general, in conservation subdivisions, they usually average about 15% impervious surface, just because they're usually clustered, they're usually clustered, so there's going to be less impervious surface just by the nature of a conservation subdivision, with less roads, less driveway. nature of a conservation subdivision with less roads, less right-of-way and things like that. So they tend to be around people who said impervious anyway. So that's only a very small piece of the information that I provided you tonight with that packet. There's a pretty big packet, I think, of over 20 pages of recommendations that the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee put together. Catherine Dinerger is presenting to the Planning Board on August 3rd, and I encourage you all to come to that meeting because she'll provide more information, especially on the two sets of ordinance that I'm not able to cover tonight. And then we're talking to Roger about what the next steps to be for the board commissioners, how to take this information and do something with it. And he really thought it'd be a great idea to set up a work session to really delve into the recommendations. And perhaps like some members of the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee, or Catherine, or I could come and help either answer questions that you might have. The other thing is that once you feel like you have enough information to go forward with a decision, there's a couple of paths you can take with this information. First, you could totally just reject it and not do anything with it. But the other thing would be to incorporate it into the Unified Development Ordinance, which is likely to be enacted and may play 16 perhaps. And Clarion Associates are aware of this work and are very willing to do that type of work to incorporate it if you know that's what you want to do. The other option would be to adopt a standalone ordinance and go through this process of public hearing. And that would perhaps take about less time and way for you, you know, to come through. And then Roger mentioned that there is been, you know, you're going to have to be reviewing a lot of small area plans and Chatham Park development and for any other major developments that may be coming from Pittsboro. And that the ordinance recommendations that the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee put together could be used as guiding principles for reviewing those small area plans. That's another path you could do with this information. Whatever else you think. So I know there's a lot of information. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, you can always call me. I have a card, or you can pop the button. I'm sure she'll also be very willing to talk to you about it. So that's all I have for you. Thanks, sir.
And I thank you for the committee's work on this project. And they all put a great deal of time into it. Very much appreciated.
Yeah, I really agree. I feel for the work they did too. I mean, they're amazing. I really, they should have come in every other week to talk about this stuff. You know, on a work day is really cool. It's really.
Having gone to a few of the meetings, I agree with that because I know it was a lot of work on a lot of people's side of it.
Yeah, I know some of the committee members brought this stuff home with them, you know, and they did research on their own. They developed subcommittees to really delve into the recommendations, so.
They're a very knowledgeable committee too. It's really.
Yeah.
So let me ask a couple of questions here since I've been coming in the middle of this. I was wondering, I was a little embarrassed that I was not very well informed about this and I thought maybe it was something that I had failed to do. But then I realized the inception of this took place while I was a retired guy and was not paying attention to municipal government. So I understand why I missed the kickoff. So I have some questions. So I hear you've been doing a lot of work, a lot of interesting technical work. You have on a continuum of just starting to 100% complete it. Where do you think you are? What's your, what's your delivery product?
I think by, I mean, really, so the case study where we're using Pittsboro as a model, that will probably be done in the fall. I really think that, we're aiming for an October deadline for that. But all the other deliverables, such as the ordinance language, the recommendations from the committee, and the economic impact analysis will be ready for you to view in two weeks. I think we're really close to finishing that piece.
So your overall effort, you're at the 90% level maybe? Okay. Okay. And then I heard a recommendation that your work needs to be dovetailed or coordinated with Clarion's work. If the board, if it's the intent of the board to use this work to influence our Unified Development Ordinance, then I heard the suggestion for some sort of a working group to bring Clarion's efforts together with yours to try and achieve some sort of a synthesis of the two efforts.
Yeah, and we've been talking to Clarion all along, so they're quite aware of this project.
It just sounds like it could happen with UDO or we could start taking the steps. I wonder about that.
Okay. Well, is the board interested in doing that? Do we want to encourage the two groups to have such a work session? When you say work session, are you talking about?
Oh, I was thinking more, I mean, we probably need to do a work session if you want to look forward with that. But I was also thinking that you may all appreciate doing a work session to understand what the review committee or ordinance committee can get from that.
Yeah, that's what I understood. Because we hear the word work session, usually that means all six groups are coming in on a Saturday morning.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I understood. It was being referenced.
If you want to.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not mixing up terminology.
I want to echo and reinforce what Erka was saying, that the, in Clarion's work on preparing a new UDO for Pittsboro, this is an important component. What should be the approach to conservation of natural resources and wildlife? And how does that fit in? So we have, and Erka's right, that our, people at Clarion who've been, work on UDO have been following this and getting regular briefings about how it's going. And so the, it is our hope that there be this presentation, which is the first time the two board commissioners have seen this material from this group. And then the, and then a discussion by the planning board, possibly where the planning board might have some ideas or suggestions about how to move forward. I'm hoping that at, from the policy point of view, that the board commissioners at some point would be in a position to offer some direction to the consultants and the staff working on the UDO. Or if you want to go ahead and do something like this now. But I think that tonight is a good step in starting the dialogue with the, with the leadership of Pittsboro and then continue next week at the planning board. And my hope is that at some point, we will get some guidance from you about what you think about all of this. You love it all, you hate it all, you like some parts of it, and give some direction to the consult team about what should this, some, all, none, you think ought to be incorporated into the draft UDO that will be coming forward to you some months from now. So that's, I'm not sure what the best process is for accomplishing that, but that's.
Sir, I would like to ask you for. I think personally, I would like to have additional information to review all of this and tonight, to just, it's too quickly to have a decision tonight because this is very, this impacts a lot of things. So I would like to have the opportunity to totally review all of that. And a planning session, I wouldn't have a problem with that either, because I would like to see this and then all those in reference to the UDO. That would probably be a good idea, but we need to, I think I do. I need to understand exactly.
Sure.
All of this with more detail.
And now I'm going to be stepping away from the role of being your UDO writer and step into the role of your interim planning director. As we've been talking with Catherine and Brooke, really encouraging them to come to you with this presentation, but also very much saying, we are not asking the board commissioners for any decisions right now. This is, this is the first step in this, in this dialogue and in this briefing. So I want to get this in front of you, but not asking you tonight to make any decisions.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Walden leaves here, it sounds like we might need to add a note on the plan of action and milestones, your deliverables, or your plan that you laid out, of course, and how you're getting from the beginning to the end of the UDO. Add a note on there that, call it this work session where we incorporate these two efforts. Can you bring us a recommendation about whether, you know, it's first half of October or second half of, you know, when would be the appropriate time? Give us like a six-week window.
Yes.
When would be appropriate to target, like a six-week window where this work session would make sense, where the information would be mature enough that you get a meaningful meeting?
I think, I think that's a great idea. And so I'm taking that as a request to look at the calendar and look at where we are with UDO and.
Make a suggestion.
And make a suggestion to you.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. Thank you.
Brooke, is the two documents that were awaiting us this evening, these are recommendations for goals of UDO language, or is this suggested UDO language?
Yeah, it's suggested UDO language, yeah. And actually, it might be helpful to give you the model, so you could insert those pieces of language in the model. Because right now, I think Catherine prepared those documents and they're a little bit out of place because you don't see the whole ordinance. You only see the language to kind of fill in the blanks where there are blanks in the ordinance.
So the author of this is Catherine Dinerger?
Yeah.
She's the manager of the company.
Yeah.
So there's more to this to get the idea of what the ordinance wants to say?
Yeah, actually, I think that, yeah.
Well, that'd be important.
I agree, I agree. I think that would be included.
I would like to, I think I'm looking at the entire recommendation.
You know what I would, could do is just take all the language that they drafted in those recommendations and insert it into the model ordinance, so you could see how it would look as a standalone ordinance if you went that direction and give that to you. That would be helpful.
Yeah. I think ultimately, we want to avoid a fragmented set of ordinances that we have today.
Yeah.
Hence the effort on the UDO. So it does make sense to review this and give some guidance as to how to incorporate it into the overall picture. So, yeah, if we can get the full document.
Yeah, I can put that together and email it to Alice. Maybe that'll be your head. Okay, thank you.
And thank you for the presentation because I think you answered some other questions that I did have.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Brooke.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So if our guests are abandoning us while we transition to the next item. Chatham Park Water System Improvements. Engineer Mr. Royal can introduce this item.
I was a Boy Scout, but I obviously bore them to tears.
That's great, thank you.
Likely a story. Okay, so good evening. I'm going to be as quick as possible. This is a follow-up item about an elevated water tank that Chatham Park is proposing. So just for a quick refresher, back in March, commissioners received a report about three alternatives for water tanks to be installed in conjunction and connected to the town water system. So tonight's report is about the kind of final recommendation and the fact that Chatham Park is intent on moving forward with this recommendation because it works, it also works for the town of Pittsboro's needs in the near term, we believe. The bottom line here is the 300,000 gallon tank would be installed, there's a graphic. If you could pull that up. It's a, it's called Exhibit One or A. That would probably be most helpful. Is the, the tank would be located on Chatham Park property.
That it?
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, that's awesome. So the tank would be located here on Chatham Park property. This is Suttles Road coming down from 15501. The idea is instead of putting a tank where the existing standpipe million gallon tank are, is that this tank would meet the needs of Chatham Park and this entire area in the near term for water demand and volume. And it would also help improve the town's pressure problem that's in this general area of the northern part of the town. They would install a 16-inch ductal iron line from the tank to Suttles. And this would be a gravel maintenance road that would be constructed for the purpose of a future access to, for a million gallon tank approximately right here. But for Phase One, this 16-inch line would go from the tank to Suttles in the DOT right-of-way. It would go down to approximately here, which is at 15501 right-of-way, and tap into the existing 16-inch ductal iron pipe that goes to the water treatment plant. So this tap right here, location, we don't know yet. There's a special type of utility method to determine the type of material and the thickness of the pipe. And they're, the town has not been able to provide them with this location of where the ductal iron pipe turns into a plastic pipe that comes through here. I'm sorry, comes down 501. So at some point, it's, it becomes a plastic PVC pipe until you get it back to Lowe's and it goes back to ductile again. So the first thing they're going to do is locate the ductile and figure out the best place to tap into that 16-inch line.
They gonna be doing that by digging?
They will dig. And they've got other equipment to listen and use methods for magnetism and all that kind of stuff. So once they decide where a good place is to install this tap device, which is called an automated pressure valve or control valve. And what this will do is it will read the pressure, it'll basically be a little bypass loop around the ductile and it'll read the pressure and automatically determine when this tank needs to be pressurized to fill it back up. This tank would, would serve as the pressure controller for these two tanks, really just the standpipe, which controls what goes into the million gallon tank. And then from here, it goes off to the Horton tank. So the, this alternative, we believe, is the best Phase One alternative because it meets the immediate needs of Chatham Park, which is what they, this is what they've been asking for. And it also meets town of Pittsboro's needs for the pressure issue. Now, there's a few items in here that I think that we're recommending that the board consider for, Chatham Park to include in their, in their configuration, to literally help the town meet some current needs that are admittedly not directly related to Chatham Park, but they're directly related to our entire town system and the operations of our entire town system. And one of them is water age. And so whenever water sits in a tank, it ages. And the older the water, the less chlorine is in it. And the less chlorine is in it, the more flushing we have to do. So in discussions with their engineers, adding a, adding a fourth tank to the town, in theory, will increase the water age. Once the water gets from the treatment plant all the way to this tank, and then depending on how long it sits here, then it comes on out when this valve opens, then it comes to the standpipe, then the million gallon tank, then the Horton tank. So there's a lot of age in the, in the system. And even when it leaves the Horton tank, it's sitting around in pipes in the south end of town for gosh knows how long, which is why we do a lot of flushing in that end of town because of water age. So one of our recommendations is to approve this, approve this project. We think it's a great project, Phase One. And also add a second control valve approximately in this location where the operators of the water plant, Adam Pickett and his staff, could manually override, whoops, there's a nice water feature.
Perfect.
There, thank you. We could manually override the, the issue of water age by pushing water from this new tank straight through the system to the Horton tank and bypass the standpipe and the million gallon tank. Currently, we can't do that. Currently, it has to go through this, I call it spaghetti junction, to get down to the Horton tank. So that's a staff recommendation. It's not been a proposal per se from Chatham Park, but it's informational. There's a second item that Adam was requesting was so that he can push water straight through this device and not come to the tank when it's, when it's not necessary to come to the tank. And that would require a second device in this tank. It's some altitude-type meter device. And so that, with that device, Adam could run straight through this and basically skip all three tanks and go straight south. and basically skip all three tanks and go straight south without worrying about having to go through three tanks first. So I guess the essence of this recommendation is to, you know, approve this approach, Chatham Park's approach, but also, we're encouraging the, to include the installation of this type of device by the million gallon tank and other control valve, and the altitude valve, or altitude gauge on the tank that can control this device when Adam wants to shoot it straight through. The other piece to this is folks in this area, their pressure's going to go up by maybe 10 pounds per square inch. So they're going to need these pressure reducer valves installed behind their meter, their water meter. So what Mr. Petit did back when Chapel Ridge ran a line down Russet Run was, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the story is, we sent, we sent out notices and basically gave them some plumbers to call that we had arranged, that are available with a price sheet, and the residents paid to have this PRV installed at maybe $300 apiece. I'm not sure if that's, I think that's about right. So we're recommending that the town figure out a way for the town to pay for it, just because this is not an issue that the residents had any workings to have to deal with. It's just, it's just happening on their watch, if you will. So there's some issues to consider that are financial with this that are not specifically Chatham Park-related, but it's, in my mind, is directly related and impacts the town. So without, answering your questions.
Can't you put a reducer on the beginning of that development? Instead of put each individual, a control valve with each individual home?
No, the elevation of the tank will increase. It's going from, it's going up to 710. And right now, we're at 697, 697, so the whole area will be pressurized. And they need the pressure, everyone can find the pressure, especially the fire department. But, so we have to go back, that's a great question. We have to go back.
Each individual?
Yeah, and maybe there's 50, maybe there's 75. We're not sure exactly how many.
Thank you very much, Brett.
Sure. So I'll, I'll try to answer some questions as well as I can. Chatham Park is moving forward with the design of the tank. There is a schedule that I believe included in the... It's, it might be in the minutes. Yeah, it's Item 4. They're desiring to have water spring of 20, summer of 2017, is when they want to have water in that tank, in terms of their development. And so you back into it, and we're looking at, we're going to be looking at review of permits and plans this early winter.
Questions from the board, who wants to go first?
I've got a couple of technical questions that I don't quite understand. And it has to do, not with the pressure, I got that, but the age of the water and the idea that these pressure control valves will enable fresher, or more fresh water to arrive at the south of town by bypassing the tanks. In fact, I do have a pressure question. So that would simply be relying on the pumps at the plant to pressurize that flow.
Right.
Whereas, we'd like to use the elevation to...
Gravity.
To do the work. So it seems odd to me that we are looking to gain all this, achieve all this pressure gain and then abandoning it for fresh water sometimes.
Occasionally.
Occasionally. So what happens to the water in those tanks that's not flowing? Because we've now bypassed them, because they're sitting there. It's kind of like somebody butting me in line.
Right.
And now I got to stand there and age a little bit longer, and then I get to do my job.
I think what, how Adam would respond to that, because I don't operate these systems, is that's a very temporary push. It doesn't take long to push fresh water into Horton tank, as an example. It may be a matter of hours. And so that, that's insignificant when it comes to water sitting in a tank, you know. It's not days. And that's what we're talking about now. That's our age problem, is days of age. You know, water running from one tank to another, and it takes a while. And it all depends on the use, the demand, of course. It's all dynamic.
I think part of the answer to that question would be that, right now, the million gallon tank is serving the communities, you know, the radius around that tank and down in the Horton area. But when you do what you propose, which is push water straight to Horton tank, Adam would probably put less of a supply in the million gallon tank, because the demand for the customers locals at the tank would drop. So I don't think he's going to still fill it to the top and use it more slowly, I think.
Maybe right, Captain?
Yeah, I think he would try to keep the water freshable.
Yeah, he always is, and he, Adam believes in a manual control. He doesn't believe in automation because of that very reason. He likes to know how many chemicals, you know, how many pounds of chemicals are going in at all times, what the flows are everywhere. And so he, he believes this will really help him operate the entire distribution system more efficiently. And it would reduce the need to flush, which is another non-revenue issue with water, you know, that we pay for electric and chemicals, and we're going to flush it out. So it's a, it's a, it's a water conservation issue as well. But Adam runs the system very, very well. And he thinks he can run this system very well, too. He will, he'll have also SCADA, which is the electronic instrumentation, on his screen, and he'll be able to see what's going on at every component.
Fred, how is this going to set the water going to Chapel Ridge?
Great question. Currently, Chapel Ridge in the town of Pittsburgh, you know, we have a contract, and we, we supply them water whenever they, they turn their pumps on. A parallel track to this is, we need to have a better relationship on water communication, because they pull from Adam day and night unbeknownst to him. And sometimes he comes back and he's hustling to catch up. And so that's an excellent question, that Chapel Ridge and the town have been verbally talking about a water management agreement, so that we know at least, so that Adam knows what the elevation of the water is in their tank. That's the minimum he would like to know. And I'm suggesting we have a water operation plan where, whenever the town has to, like in an emergency, we can just shut them down or slow them down so that we don't have a conflict. That's in the works, and Mr. Gruzbek has been kind of leading that piece. So I can't, I'm not sure where we are in that right now. But it's an excellent comment, because they're, they are our largest water user. Currently.
Any other questions? Shall I start down my list and you'll come to the chair?
He said there were 50 to 75 homes that would be affected by the pressure change.
That's a total estimate.
75, like the most?
Probably, yeah. It seems like we did a count about six months ago. I just can't quite remember.
Because if you're thinking that it's going to be $300 per...
Yeah, I, I put 15,000 as an estimate. We would need to look at that closer and...
I calculated 25 if you use your metric of 100.
75, yeah. Yeah, it may be less than that.
That's just a concern, that's a lot.
Right.
Okay, I've got quite a few here. First one is, are you describing to us a town of Pittsburgh capital construction project? Or a Chatham Park investors' capital construction project? I mean, I know who's designing it. Who's going to advertise for the bids? Who's going to supervise the construction? Who's going to decide when it's complete and satisfactory and pays the designer and the construction company?
That's a great question. The development agreement is the vehicle, or the instrument that would be used to make, to clarify everything you just asked. It would be in a development agreement. And their engineers who are working on this piece have told me that, that Chatham Park is preparing a draft to submit to the town for review and comment. And that's, that's as much as I know.
Next question was, upon completion of the construction, who will own, operate, and maintain the new infrastructure?
That would also be in the development agreement.
Just show some of my cards here, by the way, that's an important question. Yeah, philosophically, I think it's important that whoever mandates the design, controls the design, controls the construction, controls the quality of materials and the quality of technology goes into it or operated, maintained it for at least 20, 30 years. If you're taking on that responsibility, it'll inform how you make those quality decisions when you're doing your design and your construction. I think it's a recipe for disaster to have one entity control the design, the construction, decisions about quality that are designed into the system, and pass that off to somebody else to maintain, own, and operate. You get bad outcomes when you do have that. Next question is, do we know how this project would score in a priority rating system if we actually had a comprehensive utility system master plan? Is this really the first best use of available capital construction dollars to do what our utility system needs first and most? First of all, it doesn't address wastewater at all, so I think it's a incomplete plan. Do we even, do we even know what our first best use of our first available capital construction dollars for the overall system? Is this what we should be doing first?
My, my just quick thought is, our distribution system has a lot of capital needs in terms of maintenance. And since this is a new development, they're looking to build up some infrastructure that meets their near-term needs and meets the town's needs to the extent that they can, and do, meet our needs. Like if we have a capital project need in the south part of town, this doesn't exactly address that.
And it doesn't begin to address anything about wastewater either, so...
Right.
It's a standalone project that deals only with Chatham Park's needs and their groundwater.
Yeah, I, I try to address the town's capital needs in the most adjacent and immediate area of this new proposed system, like this new valve, as an example, and the float switch. That would actually help the town in our full operation.
Okay. Next question is, looking through this project, it appears to me that it creates zero new capacity for either water or sewer. We can't make any, will make, is able to make more water, will make us able to process more wastewater. But it has the potential, when it's completed, to put a significant demand on our existing limited capacities, both on water and the wastewater side. So again, it brings me back to a comprehensive utility system master plan, and how useful that would be to answer the questions about how we'll meet potential demands from those water and sewer. If we had that information. And he'd, it'd be much easier to come to a decision about whether this is a smart move or not a smart move. Without, without that bigger picture, I don't know whether this is a good idea or not. And I guess the last, last point I would make was, I feel like we're putting an awful lot on Fred Roy here. Fred's an amazingly talented engineer, but, you know, the entire engineering company designed this. We're asking him to say whether or not he thinks it's, it's a good idea. And it occurs to me that perhaps we should find a way to give Fred the resources he needs to do a thorough peer review. People whose expertise may be going beyond his in this special, very specialized area. And I'd like to have Fred have the opportunity to do that. The board has asked to say this is okay, and that this plan should proceed. What that means, we give Fred some contract dollars to retain an engineering firm other than this designer to review the design and answer some of the questions that I just asked here. Is this, and also, I think it's, I think it's premature to do this before our, with our ongoing study of the wastewater treatment plant is completed, and we know what direction that's headed. I think there's a lot of missing information that I would need to come to the conclusion that this is the first best use of manual capital resources on this very large and complex system. So do you think such a peer review would be useful to you, Fred?
Absolutely. If I could mention something about sewer, or follow-up from your comment. Currently, Mr. Gruzbek is planning to put the 80%, 100% PER on the wastewater treatment plant on the agenda for the last meeting in August, 27th, I think, 24th. So you'll see the wastewater side at that meeting. And Wooton is still working on it with Chatham Park. It's their 20-year plan. There's still some, a little bit more work to do. But that's, that is the other side of the track that's coming.
I'd feel much more comfortable if this came back to us after that, after you've had an opportunity, if we can provide you some funds for, to hire an appropriate engineering firm that's as large and diverse as the one who designed this, to review it from the town's point of view, to answer some of these questions. And I don't think that, if there's a sense of urgency about moving this forward, I'm not following it, because even if, even when we cut the ribbon on this, say we cut the ribbon on it to 18 months to two years, again, it creates no new capacity. So I don't, we cut the ribbon and it sits there until, until our water plant and our sewer plant have changed to the point where they can support the growth up there. So I just don't see this as being on a critical path, even from a present development point of view, to get to where they want to go. I think waiting until some of this other information matures is the smart thing to do. I don't think we might get laid back from making this decision out of the woods. I don't think we would lay that at all. When we build a tank, we can't give them more than 100,000 gallons of capacity if we have no place to put the wastewater. And I don't know that we have to add on the board. On paper, it looks like he could probably double the output from his water plant, but it's never been asked to do this. We don't know whether it can or cannot. So those are my concerns about pushing forward with the decision of this tonight.
Fred, what is the decision that you're asking the town to do tonight, if any?
Well, the recommendation says... We're recommending to approve Phase 1... We're recommending to approve Phase One elevated tank design and schedule to provide sufficient treated water in Chatham Park in order to meet the expected needs in the near term. We also believe the design should include second automated pressure valve to ensure that the proposed elevated tank will not add a water age to the southern pressure zone.
Do any of the mayor's questions have anything to do with that?
No. This is just a flat-out recommendation.
Okay. But what peer review would you have on whether or not that's a recommendation that should be accepted by the town? What is there to be studied other than what you just recommended?
Well, we can answer the questions, I suppose.
Well, who pays for it, who owns it, who operates it, sure, but as far as the design is concerned, is that the best place to put a tank? Is a tank necessary to serve the northern part of the Chatham Park?
Yes. We think so.
Is it possible to serve the area projected that this tank would serve without the tank?
Can you ask that again?
We have pressure issues at the north end of town.
Right.
And if we're going to have more development in the north end of town, are we going to be having more development with insufficient pressure without this tank?
Yes.
So the tank really is going to not only serve the needs of adequate pressure for the proposed development, but also fix part of a problem that the town presently has that we would otherwise have to spend capital dollars to fix. Quite frankly, what my expectation is that this is a demand from a developer who is going to satisfy that demand by constructing infrastructure. So that's what I think, and I think they're going to do it to our specifications and that the town's going to own and operate that system, just like other public portions of infrastructure that Chatham Park will construct.
Well, if that's the case, we do need to have very clear specifications because I think Mayor Terry has a very good point. If their job is just to design it and build it, we could end up something that's going to end up costing the taxpayers a lot of money to compensate for later for the cost of quality issues. So I think if that's the case, then there definitely needs to be very clear guidelines about quality.
And I think that would happen during the permitting process because they would make submittals to the town for review and the state for review, and we would ensure that it's to our specifications and that we understand the equipment they're planning to install, we can operate the equipment they plan to install. So I think that would, that's a natural progression, absolutely. And we presently have utilities specifications for water systems that every builder uses today. Now, these would be more sophisticated because of the tank issues, but the basic infrastructure of lines and valves, we've already specified that in our utilities specifications for the town.
So you suggest that this will be in the town agreement, these specifications?
I think that the development agreement would be specified that construction will be to the town's specifications because those will change over time as we, like right now, we're replacing our old water meters with radio read meters, and I know that because I got home to no water recently.
Means maybe this is similar, is the proposal that there'd be three wastewater treatment plants. It may be cheaper to build three in the short term, but in the long term, the town would have to staff that and then as our needs grow, it's not going to be sufficient current needs. So I just think there's some things we really have to be very careful, we really have to be very careful about the cost of string and care for what the long-term costs are going to be if we don't have control of that piece.
You know, this may be the best plan since who knows what, since the Marshall Plan, but I don't think we got the information in front of us to make that determination.
From my understanding, Mr. Royal, what you all are requesting here, and the staff was the ones that recommended that we approve the water tank design, is that what specifically we're looking at, just the design at this particular point? And then it said to schedule, this is the other part, that's a little not so clear though, schedule to provide sufficient treated water to Chatham Park in order to meet the expected needs. I don't know how we would schedule that, but basically, what you're asking for is to approve the design and then the particulars in reference to that should be addressed later on. And in reference to the ownership and so forth and so on should be addressed at a later time. That's not what we're asking, according to what I'm reading here at this time. Am I right or am I wrong?
You're correct.
Okay. Now, in reference to you needing additional staff to help you, certainly that would be something that you could request if that was the case, that you would be there.
It's true, as Mayor Terry alluded, that we don't have the staff and the resources to like model the system, to confirm our fears of water age, as an example. That would cost, that would cost something for the town to have that done.
That you would, if you needed that, certainly you would request that.
That's right. Well, I didn't request it because between Mr. Pottead and Adam and I, we decided we believe this would be a huge benefit to the town without even modeling it. But if we hired a consultant, that's the first thing we would get them to do, is to model the system to see how that would impact pressure and water age down the line. As one example, and they would probably come up with a few other items that they think we should look at.
Would hydrostructures be the best resource? Because I think, as I understand it, they have the town's entire system modeled.
Yeah, we just begged them to upgrade our water cat system, so logically, that's something they could do.
So they've got the data, or they've got the model.
They've got the existing information, yeah, which is, it's not 100%, but it's best available data. It's got a disclaimer that it's, a few things they don't know for sure in the system, but...
Well, I think we've already paid many, many dollars into having that system obtained, so, and I doubt there's any system that's 100%, especially when you're talking about old infrastructure in old towns.
Yeah, we do not know where all of our valves are, as an example.
Yeah.
Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, months back, we had three plans that we sent to you guys, is that correct?
Three.
Three different plans?
Yeah, three alternatives for this.
And this is the plan that you guys and our staff came up?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any problem with this plan myself.
Well, just let me depict the wording here. It says approve Phase One elevated water tank design. First of all, I don't see that we even saw a tank design.
You haven't seen the design, and I apologize for that.
Not a design, I don't know how to get approved, as I haven't seen, but what I'm looking at is not a tank design, it's at best the conceptual plan of the system architecture. And if you want me to prove that, I'm happy to do that, just conceptually, that looks like it might work. But I'm not ready to, if I'm pressing development, I'm not going to spend tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars beginning detailed construction design until some of these other questions are answered.
That's correct. The actual plans and specs wouldn't come in until December to review. This is still a conceptual graphic. Right.
Just the general system architecture that's on the back of the films.
So you would need to change this last statement?
Yeah, this is not, it's not a design in terms of plans and specs. Yeah, it's a Phase One recommendation.
Okay, so you would need to say Phase One Elevated Water Tank Recommendation instead of you gone.
Correct.
Correct.
So what guidance and direction do you want to give Mr. Royal tonight?
Well, I think the guidance would be to review what Chatham Park Design Engineering provides as far as additional conceptual design is to execute a plan that looks like this. I mean, you're going to be providing them directive as well as review their design.
So if we were, somebody was to crack that into motion, would it be something like we approve the general concept plan with a stipulation that the town engineer will retain suitable engineering consulting support to analyze the flows and pressures that might be resolved from the proposed system, come back and give us some additional feedback on that before anybody begins to spend money on detailed engineering drawings on that might be suitable for an actual construction project? Is that what the, is that the guidance you want, Mr. Royal?
I believe Mr. Royal is also indicating that he thinks that this concept ought to include this second automated pressure valve.
I hear that, I agree. That's a direct response to what our technical folks in the plants are telling us they need, so I hear that, agree with that.
I guess the part that we get this right, it's going to impact long-term jobs. I think to me that if you feel like it would be helpful, of course we should bring this along, which we do, since that is always something that we remember. That's what Mr. Royal...
Yeah, I think we, something short of yet looks good to us, design and build it, tells us what it's, we're not ready to say that tonight. I'm not anymore.
Don't stay with the...
No.
Well, and I think we've had three professional staff members work on this, and I'm going to trust that they are going to use the resources that they need, and if they need additional resources, then they're going to make the request. So I trust when this is brought before us with the best expertise that we have in our water system, and I think it's considerable, that, you know, we can rely on that information. So if in fact there is additional modeling to be done that you think would be beneficial, let's make sure we get it done.
Yeah, that's a method to think of, the next step is our worst, so it's the next idea.
Yeah, like building tanks that are 10 feet too short for the water. So what do you want us to do, Fred? And then see if we're willing to do it.
I'd like to talk to Adam and John about this, but it sounds reasonable to get a hydrostructures in on this for a little while to look at the system and run a few models with this new elevation and work through some scenarios with Adam to confirm he remains as positive about this recommendation as he is today.
You think you could do that in 30 days?
Probably.
You got money in your budget to do that?
I'd have to check. We'd probably have to pull it from different budgets. Utilities, water. I'd have to talk to Mr. Gruzbek.
Good idea.
Where's that money going to come from?
Well, how about in our next meeting, we get to answer those questions and then we take this up again.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number five, request application from the community board.
Hello again. This item is, has a couple of unusual twists on it, so I need just a moment to describe to you what's here in front of you. The, earlier this spring, there was a proposal for a rezoning of this property that I'm about to describe, and it would be, along with the rezoning, were plans for building of a Montessori school. And so that actually went to a public hearing, and then the, for a variety of reasons, the user who was going to build a Montessori school there said, actually, no. But the owner of the property wanted to proceed with the rezoning application, so that's what we, that's what we had here. So what we have is just a straight-out application for rezoning of a property. And the Planning Board had a good discussion about this, and there are a couple of things in here that I'll tell you, just highlight for you about the Planning Board's recommendation and the staff recommendations coming to you. But the, just to set the stage here, this is a property that's about, what would we say, about an acre in size. It's a long 15, 501. It is, it is currently zoned, the R12 right here, right adjacent to it, this property is zoned C2 for commercial, and then the, how this mixed-use plan development zoning is right there. Interesting discussion at the Planning Board, and the staff's, staff had some comments and recommendations also. A key issue here, I believe, is consistency with the town's comprehensive plan and land use plan. And the, there are arguments for why this makes sense to have, to rezone this property. It's on a key commercial corridor, it's adjacent to commercially zoned property, it is an area of activity certainly now and in the future, and there are some good things that could happen there, could take advantage of its geography. The, we have in our staff analysis for you some of the zoning history and discussion about these proposed land use amendment to the town's comprehensive plan and future land use plan. What we send there is that this piece of geography on the, on the town's land use plan is zoned medium density residential, medium density residential neighborhood, and the, and those kinds of uses are single-family homes, accessory apartments, churches, parks, community buildings, schools, tennis clubs, other private facilities. Right next to this is our commercial and mixed-use categories, which include residential, commercial, civic, institutional kinds of uses, and encouraged development that echoes mixed-use types that occur elsewhere, mostly in downtown Pittsburgh. So the question is, what's the correct, what's an appropriate zoning for that property? And the staff recommendation was for approval of this rezoning application amendment, and comes down to a question of not just the designation that's on the town's comprehensive plan, but policies, the whole vision and future of Pittsburgh as incorporated all through the comprehensive plan. So just reading a sentence, the staff recommendations, while it's not, rezoning would not be approved, would not be consistent with the, specifically with the land use map, the proposed rezoning would fit in well with the general plans for this area. And so the staff recommended approval of that. Planning Board had a good discussion and is also recommending approval. On the question of the statement of consistency with comprehensive plan, which has to be considered whenever you're doing a, considering a rezoning, Planning Board made two recommendations to you. The first recommendation was a motion said that offering the opinion that the amendment submitted is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, but then went on to recommend approval of the rezoning because looking beyond just the land use plan, the Planning Board stated that nonetheless, the proposed... But then went on to recommend approval of the rezoning because looking beyond just the land use plan, the, the planning board stated that nonetheless, the proposed rezoning is reasonable considering the size and location of the tract, potential benefits to the economic, cultural, and urban development. And providing quality design features and would advance the public health, safety, and welfare of the town. So those are the recommendations that have come before you, and what you have in front of you in your packet for your consideration are two things. One is a resolution that would deny the application and an ordinance that would amend the zoning atlas to approve the application. So you are being asked to make that decision tonight. And our recommendation to you is for approval of the rezoning and making the case that the, that the, this proposed amendment can be found to be consistent with comprehensive plan. Including all of the officially adopted and ethical town plans and policies. And that it is reasonable for the uses that would be permitted in the C2 district. And that it would have a positive benefit on the surrounding properties and community. So the, we, our recommendation to you is that you adopt the ordinance that's in your packet that would amend the, the zoning as, as requested. If you, if you are not in agreement with that, we also included in your packet a resolution that would deny the application. So the representative of the applicant is here to speak to you or answer questions for you, and I'll sit down a moment and take one of the questions, yeah?
Would the applicant?
Hi, I'm Donna Rizan, and I represent Karen Campbell, I'm her real estate agent. If you have any questions, what we're simply asking is a continuation of the existing zoning there on the corner. As you just saw this, this evening, that the, the church is going directly behind this property as well. So all that combined, we are here to ask for a C2 zoning with no special exemption.
Okay, your, your zoning application doesn't include, it's not required to include, but have you got a future use in mind for this?
Not at this moment.
You just, you want to change the zoning and just hold it, hold the property?
Exactly.
So the school is?
The school.
Coming elsewhere?
Yes, she went over budget and had to withdraw.
Any more members have questions for the other?
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I, I do see that we have C2 zoning to the north, and I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this rezoning from a R12 to a C2.
Motion to approve, your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you can actually approve, congratulations, your rezoning is approved.
Very, thank you very, very much.
Okay, moving on to new business. Mr. Boyle is on the gun turret line again.
I have some help with this one. So again, I'm going to be very brief. This is a follow-up stormwater management issue. As you know, the stormwater program began with basically the ordinance, Jordan Lake Stormwater Ordinance. And upon my arrival, I took the responsibility given to me to administer the ordinance. Since I've been here, I've seen and noticed what the town has with stormwater infrastructure, where we have flooding problems, where we have water quality issues still that just haven't been addressed. And so the idea of considering or having a discussion about a level of service for a stormwater program is what this memo is about. And so we were able to obtain the services of Matthew Diner this, this summer. He was a triple-degree student in economics, political science, and one other one. Is it math? Mathematics, so anyway. So, he's working on it. So, so he's, he's helped us with some GIS analysis, he's helped us with looking at all our parcels in our database, and we have a lot of good information just sitting there for us in the future. He also helped us design the survey, and so what we're asking you to do tonight is, I'm going to first let Matt talk about the survey just for like two minutes if we have that.
So this survey, I guess, we spent a while designing it and writing graphs and stuff. So there are two pages of it, front and back. The first page, yeah. No, that's not the first page of the survey.
It'll say survey on top, it'll say stormwater management program survey. This is the second document. This is the second document. That's it?
Oh, thanks for. Thank you.
Is that it?
No.
Should say survey, should be in the survey memo.
It's like 10 pages long, I think.
It's like the last two pages.
Matt and Moll, you made it mad.
You made it mad.
You can go ahead and just.
Yeah, so, so the first page of it, front and back, is mostly just education and then define things, like runoff on talking about the.
There you go.
That's it?
So, the backup.
There we go. So that, that is the first front page of it. And so I guess first off to start off with the survey, we're going to send it out in paper documents, we're hoping to send it out through paper documents. But we're also going to have it online as well. We're going to have a link to the engineering website at the top of the survey, so if people don't want to fill it out in paper, they could just go onto their computers and fill it out and send it in that way. So where it says link to website will be the actual address, there will be an actual Pittsburgh Engineering website address. And then once you get to Pittsburgh Engineering, there'll be a link to the survey. So this page and the back of this page, which has some pictures, talks about the need for stormwater management program, a little bit what that would be about, some of the things like that, just very general and brief. And then the second page is actually the actual survey that people would fill out. There are only five questions, we were trying to keep it really short. And there were just a few things we were trying to really get at, some of the main needs that the town might have. And so the main needs for, for reasons you'd have a stormwater program would be flooding and water quality issues. And flooding was the one that we're very particularly interested in, so we asked a few more questions about that. So like if people had problems with flooding, we asked them if they had, had noticed problems on private or public. And trying to just get a general idea of how much of a need there is for that, how many flooding or drainage problems people have currently, because we didn't have a very good idea. And we also asked two questions about people's interest in taking steps to improve this, improve or create a stormwater program. And then on the last page, we gave them kind of three scenarios as to levels of service that a stormwater program could take. There, the first level that we described is the current one. The second one kind of adds a little bit more maintenance to the program. And the third one would be more proactive and has a lot more education and capital improvement project involved in it. So the survey is just trying to get an idea of thermometers, word Fred used, of people's interest in this program. But it's also being used as an educational piece of the front page, which I know Fred and I talked about this, was something that the town had presumed had been required by the state to try to do more education about stormwater.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
So to try to be clear, the, the recommendation for approval is to allow us to go ahead and submit this survey to the general public in every way we can. It's going to cost us about $1,000, I have it in my stormwater budget of $2,500. So we believe we'll get a lot of good, solid information to bring back to you, to tell you what the citizens feel about this, so we can decide where to go from there.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Any other questions for Fred? Do I hear a motion to accept the engineer's recommendation?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, unopposed, the recommendation approved, thank you.
I'm sorry, can I? Wow, I just want to take, this is my last board meeting before my internship is over. I want to take a moment and thank the board and mayor, and also the staff, especially Fred, for taking me on as an intern. And Nancy as well has been really great as a sort of second point of contact. And really all the staff has been really kind and just, it's been a good experience and I blank a lot, so thank you.
Okay, our added new business number two is Mr. Grisbeck's item regarding change in our personnel policy that would allow the town to pay payments in lieu for employees who wanted to decline the town's health insurance. It's my understanding that this answer is available for questions. Okay. I guess I'll start out by comment, when I read this, my first thought was, wow, this would have been really great. When I employ, there are certain classes of employees who really, really benefit by this, and I'm a retired military guy, I would have been one of them. With no town insurance, and you're still fully insured because of my military service, so this would have been just free money to somebody like me. Not everybody's in that circumstance where at age, you know, 30 or so, you're covered by some other insurance. But thinking about the classes of employees that could benefit from this, if we have people who are insured on their spouse's insurance at work and had a very good plan that covered both employee and spouse. Those employees would benefit from this. Retired, people who've retired from another system and were covered with insurance that way. Or folks who just can go out and find what they believe to be adequate life insurance on the open, or medical insurance on the open market, might choose to supplement their paychecks a little bit here. Of course, the big concern is that folks will bargain hunt for insurance and be underprotected, and then nobody wants to see that happen, so. I guess I have a little trepidation about not being able to anticipate all the unintended consequences of this move. I see the good in it. I'd have a really fat nest, I could have done this for five years, but. So I don't know, I think generally, I think if the manager and the staff think it's a good idea, a little bit, give it a try. Interested to hear what the rest of the board members think about it.
What effect does this have on the group policy in reference to, because you have group policy with a certain insurer. So does that cause a problem when, if you do offer individuals that money in terms of their rates and everything? I know you have a group rate, so will that have any effect on any of that?
It could potentially, but the, I think that the, it was come up when we were going back with our renewal with, with our insurance for next year. That we could see where, and that's one of the things that we said in the policy, that if it has an effect on, that as long as our, our plan is not threatened, that we would be allowed to, to opt this as, as a benefit. So we built that into the policy, that if it does have an effect where, for example, it would compromise what we might be able to get for a group plan for our employees, then, then this benefit would, would basically go away. So what we're trying to do is offer benefits to staff currently, but with the caveat that it could be subject to being withdrawn if it affects the, the integrity of the group, of the town's plan. So that's the, so the answer is, it could potentially, but we've got that built into the policy.
Okay.
That could, and Mr. Ball makes a good point, that potentially in the future could be more impactful, because as, if I remember correctly, there was, we were always shooting for this threshold that at 50 employees, you got some kind of price break.
You do, yeah.
We were at 44, and now we're probably 45 or 6, or we're right there bumping up against it, and five years from now, we'll probably be at 50 or 52 or 55.
And they, they do, they do allow a little bit of a, of a percentage on either side, but 50, but really, we're not, we will get a much better bang for our buck when we reach that 50 threshold consistently and stay above that number. So it definitely will, will change our, what we could offer in the future for sure.
If you have a lot of employees declining coverage, would that?
And that could have an impact if employees decline the coverage.
You gotta have 50 people participating.
Because it's part of this, it's part of the census that's, that happens when, when we're looking at our insurance as being renewed. So again, we built that into the policy, that if it has a negative impact, that it, we would, we would, we said that as a, as a benefit.
Is that going to include the affordable care?
Excuse me?
Is that going to include the affordable?
Yes.
Does that need to be a part of the revolution? Does that need to be a part of the revolution?
I'm sorry?
Does that need to be deadline, or does that need to be part of the revolution to get it withdrawn at any time?
Well, it's in the policy, so I think we're covered, Commissioner, because we've got that in the written policy to go, that that's clear, that that's the intent.
Do you have a sense for how many employees might do this, or did we not ask them?
Um, I don't, but I can tell you I personally would be, would benefit from, from this, because I have coverage with my husband's plan, so I've got double coverage with, so I know of one, which is myself. But I'm sure that if we were to let other staff know that, we would probably have others as well that are covered under a spousal plan that also have the town's plan too.
Did you draw this up, Nancy?
Yes, I did. Yeah, so it's kind of my, my words, but thank you.
No, I just have one question is regarding the withholding taxes. How is that filed up, because if you take the bonus or anything like that, it puts you in a different withholding tax.
Well, the, we are, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand your question, but it would, how this would be treated as additional wages for, for staff? So it would basically affect the W-2. So that's why I recommended that we only pay 90% of the premium, so that the, the town would not be out any money as far as the withholding taxes for both federal and social security, so, because that's 7.65%. So, so the town would not have to pay any additional taxes itself, and, and it would show as income for W-2 purposes. So is that to your question?
Yeah, but you don't know what rate that would be on the W-2? Would that be a higher rate? Or would it go right with your?
It would be added to the other.
It would be added to your, added to your salary, so let's say someone's salary is $10,000, and it was $500 with insurance, then it would show for gross wages $10,500. And, and taxes would be paid accordingly on that $500.
I have a question. Do you have to hire a third-party administrator to take care of this? Because I recently had a similar situation to be in compliance for the July 1th effective date in order to, to relay a cash type into an employee, it had to go through a third-party administrator. So I'm not sure if you know about that.
No, I was not aware of that, because I do know of other municipalities that actually run that through their payroll.
Right, which is what we're doing too, but we were also told that we were required to hire a third-party administrator and it's expensive.
I said, no, I was not aware of a third-party.
Okay, and it may be municipalities different from a traditional nonprofit, so.
Yeah, we could be accepted, but this is something that I, I know of at least 10 or 12 other municipalities that are currently offering this through their, through their programs. And, and it's still in existence from previous years and have also opted it for this year too. So I, I think we'd be okay, I would be glad to check on that.
Yeah, and by that, it's not like people just take the cash and they'll get covered, it's sort of a, a way of making sure that people are covered and. It's sort of a way of making sure that people are covered and...
Oh, yeah, you need to make sure, one of the caveats is that we also said we have to have proof of insurance.
Exactly, yes.
And so, that's one of the things, you kept to say, I want to take this money in lieu and not have coverage, you have to have coverage, it is required.
Yeah, I understand, I just thought we had to rate that, but it's not, it's just giving cash to somebody.
No, no, exactly.
Any other questions for Nancy? So, are we inclined to let the staff figure with this? I hear a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second?
All in favor? Unopposed? The resolution passes unanimously? Good luck, I'm going to discover some unintended consequences. They always scare me a lot.
I will certainly keep the board a class if I try to convince Barry.
Okay, moving on along. Let's see, the manager's not able to join us tonight, so it's scary.
May I?
Yes, come on in, because my big, okay?
Yes, Brian had asked that I just make two quick announcements on his behalf, and that was just more of a staffing update. He wanted all of you to know that Denise Bryant has accepted a position as the administrative support for our planning, engineering, and parks staff, and she'll be starting with us on August 3rd, and she'll be at the Fayetteville office. And also, Michelle Myers has accepted our offer, and she will be, I don't quite know her title, I think it's like an engineering technician. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
And her tentative start date is going to be the 13th of August. And it's quite possible that she'll be here, and that, we're still working that out, because we, one of the things we don't know quite is where we're going to put her. But, one of the things that in talking with Brian, I had offered that the front office, that as you lock in the door, there's the two offices on either side of the front door, there's a smaller office there, and I had offered that as a space for her to be temporarily until we are able to find a bigger space for the planning, zoning, and parks staff. So, she may be starting the 13th as a tentative date, and wanted you to know that she felt that accepted as well. And that's all he asked me to say.
Okay. Okay, do we want to do our Commissioner Concerns before the closed session?
I'm sorry, I have one more thing, and I beg your pardon. That was, you should have found at your desk budget books?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that was one of the things that we worked for all of you to have their, a book with the budget, with all the categories, and then you'll see a section for each month. We'll start preparing, when we give you the financials, they'll be freehold punched, and you can put your financial reports right in that book. And any budget amendments that you get, we'll freehold punch that, and you'll be able to put that in it, so you'll have your handy-dandy notebooks when it comes to finances for the town.
Thank you Nancy.
You're welcome.
So, what's the will of the board? Do we want to do Commissioner Concerns and updates before the closed session? Or do we do it now? Okay. Okay, let's see here. On the EDC, the only thing, y'all probably saw this in the newspaper, our EDC president, Diane Reed, is in his retirement. She'll be, I think, with us up through, I think she said February. So, the EDC will be looking for a new president here in the next few months. That's the only thing I have on the EDC. Mayor Grant, Downtown Business Association.
Well, I think everybody attended Thursday evening. It was fun. Good to see Walter there from the county, and Diana.
Okay, Commissioner Concerns, Mr. Farrell.
I don't, it's just one thing, I spoke to Brian Brusbeck about this. It's about a policy that we had regarding some changing of water from one name to another. It was a business gentleman came to me and spoke, and what happened on that ordinance, he had to put his social security number. He said with Progress Energy, he was changing out of the renter name into his so that he can clean the house and whatever need to be done till he rented. And he, in our policy, he had to put his social security number down. I think that's something we need to check on, and maybe see if I take that off or even just have the last four digits on it. So, Progress Energy or Gas Company needed one ask for that. And, you know, I just think that'd be a good idea that we can look into that, change that.
Yeah, I would agree, unless there's some people telling a reason to have it. I don't want to be responsible for that. Collection is the reason. Collection. Yes, collection is the reason why you want that. So, you get the right person.
It also allows us the opportunity to identify that it is the correct person that's applying for the services, and as attorney-in-house excited, does help us on collections. If we have any bad debt by having a social security number along with, you know, the last existing address, it allows us the opportunity to be able to try to collect on that down the road if they end up leaving us and owing us money.
How do you feel about the security of this, the security numbers that we do have?
I'm sorry?
It's not a public record.
No, it's... It is, all of that information is kept in locking file cabinets. They're available just after in the day, but they're locked in the evening, and so they're only open, that information is only readily available. It's also in a very secure area as well. So, I'm very, I feel very confident that we are safeguarding that information to the best of our ability, and I don't feel that it's being compromised. And that's my opinion.
It's not in the automated account information? It's not on the do, it's not on the system?
No, no, and then the accounting system, it truncates the last four. The only place that actually, that information actually exists is on the paper application itself, which is in a locked file cabinet. And so, that information isn't even available electronically. So, if someone were to hack us, which God forbid that ever would happen, but that information they wouldn't get, because all they'd have is, it's redacted with just the last four digits.
So, we still cannot find, I mean, if something happened with the last four digits? We worry about that for water?
If you're going to try to get his tax refunds, you need the whole thing. If you're trying to get, can you sue the right person, you need the whole thing.
Do we confirm the numbers are accurate?
We're not running any kind of credit checks, so, no, we're not confirming that the numbers are accurate. We're working on a good faith that they've provided us with the correct social security number.
I don't know the gas company did that.
It's a fairly common practice for other municipalities to ask for the social security or a tax ID number, and many other jurisdictions, if it's not provided, they'll actually ask for a higher security deposit. So, usually twice an average bill or double what the minimum security deposit is. It's, again, just trying to help us on the back as if we had to collect down the road.
Actually, there was a considerably large amount of money if the social security number was not given.
It's a, I don't...
$200?
I think it's, yeah, I was thinking $200, but I wasn't sure if I was saying that. So, if they don't give it, then we do ask for a higher deposit.
That's all I have.
What I have, I'm not concerned, it's just a question, and I don't know if anybody has the answer. Anyway, I posted on the town Facebook page this week, a photograph of the Belmont Point Apartments under construction, and wow, there's a lot of interest in that. Then over 3,000 people saw it. And people are asking when they're going to be completed, when they're going to be available. And I just wondered if, well, Brian's not here, but anybody else ask back there? Do you know anything about it?
I think by the end of the calendar year.
By the calendar year, so safe to say that's not that they're projected to be in here.
That's when they're slated to be open, is end of, early before Christmas.
And who to make contact with? I have another question there.
We'd have to, we'd have to talk to the owner and get, I don't know if it's a real estate company or however they're going.
Okay, we don't think it is. I just have a comment, do we have to do logo?
I kind of created that.
You found our budget, you found here?
Yeah, I couldn't get in copyright trouble, so that's pretty off of our own tablet. But, that was a little tablet I got, man. So, I just kind of created that letterhead because I thought it was something to do with it. And I've got a completely proprietary, I want the town to that.
Yeah, I only have one thing, and Fred can maybe relay this to John, but you know, you all work on it together. I had a citizen call me about speed limit signs in Powell Place. And I checked to see, and she's right, we, you come into Powell Place, run the whole district, the length of Millbrook, there are really not very many speed limit signs. And one of the two that I saw was smack behind a big old tree. It probably wasn't a big old tree, but the sign was put there, but it is, and I can't see it. So, she's concerned that there's too few signs, and they're not visible. I was wondering if it'd be a fairly simple fix. We've got a lot of no-parking signs on the right. Use the same post and just move the no-parking down, but one or two more might satisfy. I'll send you an email about it.
Okay.
Talk about it soon. That's all I have. So, somebody want to make a motion to go into closed session?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318A5 to consider the acquisition of property.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You want to go into closed session?